Testing one, two.
Testing English, testing English. English, testing English.
Check one, two, check one, two, one, two.
Testing English, testing English. English, testing English. Testing English.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats and members of the public to take a seat. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute.
We'll be starting in a minute.
Start the meeting in one minute. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à la réunion de la ville d'Orleans.
Welcome to city council meeting for this November 9th meeting.
Rise and stand for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as we ask councillor Shirley to introduce our special guests who will sing our national anthem.
Thank you, your worship. Here today, we have the choir from Leslie Park School in College Ward. The choir ranges in age from eight to 11, and this group has been together now for two years. And they'll be performing the second annual chapters fundraiser for the school on November 23rd. So, ladies and gentlemen, Leslie Park School.
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons come and captain pass a port say the pair. He will say, what's a lack of war? Tony's war is you may pop air. They're blue, brilliant, they're smart. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Merci beaucoup à les étudiants de Leslie Park. At this point in our program, it's my pleasure to present the Mayor City Builder Award. I'd ask Ms. Gina LePointe to come forward and also ask Ms. LePointe's councillor Stephen Blay as well as Bob Monnet, whose ward includes the Orleans Community Garden, to join us as well. Welcome Gina, and Gina's family is with us as well. Here comes councillors Blay and Monnet.
Thank you for accepting the invitation.
Thank you for accepting the invitation.
...community garden, which currently hosts 70 plots for gardeners from the community. Gina LePointe est la présidente de Jeanne-Dauphine.
Gina LePointe is the president of the Orleans Community Garden, which currently hosts 70 plots for gardeners in the community.
Since retiring as a military police officer in 2006, Gina has dedicated herself to the community garden, eventually being elected president in November 2010. Under her care, the garden and grounds have flourished with the installation of two sheds for the gardeners, a solar panel pump system, which was a first for the city of Ottawa, and most recently, the addition of beehives. It's absolutely incredible, this community garden. Councillor Monnet and I were out visiting it to see all of this technology and we both received a bottle of Orleans honey, and it is really quite remarkable how beautiful and well-maintained this garden is. Under her care, the garden and grounds have flourished with the installation of these two sheds, and on top of her role and responsibilities with the garden, Gina has also been looking after the bees since their arrival.
On plus des fonctions qu'elle occupe. On top of her role and responsibilities with the garden, Gina is also looking after the bees since their arrival.
Years, the Orleans Community Garden has opened its doors to members of the public as part of the Ottawa Garden Day. This year, Gina was instrumental in having Mark Burleton, head gardener for the Governor General's House, visit the community garden for Garden Day. Given his limited amount of public appearances, this is quite an accomplishment. The Orleans Community Garden was established to provide a community space for the residents of Orleans to grow local, organic produce while educating the community on the practice and benefits of gardening. The Orleans Community Garden gives back to the community by donating fresh produce to the Ottawa Mission, which is used to prepare healthy and delicious meals for their clients.
The Jardin Redon at a community. The Orleans Community gives back to the community by donating fresh produce to the Ottawa Mission, which is used to prepare healthy and delicious meals for their. the Ottawa Mission, which is used to prepare healthy and delicious meals for their clients.
Gardeners who donate food leave it in one of the sheds, and Gina actually then cleans every item and delivers it personally to the Ottawa Mission every Tuesday morning. Thank you for your dedication and stewardship of the community garden, Gina. It's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award for such great community involvement with the Orleans Garden. Congratulations.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out and visiting, and along with Bob Monnet, deputy mayor Monnet, and councilmen and women. I'd like to thank you for supporting any community gardens you have within your community. They can be a really great benefit to the community. I'd like to thank my family and friends for making me want to be a better person and to give back to the community. And I'd especially like to thank Chef Rick from the mission who's here with us today. He's the one that makes it all possible. He accepts all our food and makes sure everything gets used up before it can go bad. This year, we've donated 4,000 pounds of food to the mission, so we're very happy that he accepts all of this for us. Thank you, Rick. Once again, thanks for the great honor. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseiller Monnet. Councillor Middick.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson. Councillor El Shantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseiller Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Newsbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenna.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Cherneschenko.
Present.
Conseiller Cloutier.
Present.
Conseiller Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
You have quorum.
...de procès verbe pour le 26 octobre 2016. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those arising from prior meetings. Déclaration de conflits d'intérêt. Councillor Shirelli, please.
I declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on Planning Committee Report 34-1, Surplus Federal Real Property for Homelessness Initiative, Item 11 on the council agenda, as my daughter is employed by Shepherd's Good Hope, an organization that could conceivably be eligible to apply as a housing provider proponent under the Surplus Federal Real Property for Homelessness Initiative.
Are there any other conflict of interests? Okay. Communications as presented, regrets. Councillor Wilkinson advised that she'd be absent from the City Council meeting of the 9th of November 2016. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important presentation de rapport. Conseiller Cloutier, appuyé par conseiller Monnet, s'il vous plaît.
Seconded by conseiller Monnet.
...table the reports from the Deputy City Treasurer entitled 2017 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets, the report from the Committee of Adjustment entitled 2017 Draft Operating Estimates, Committee of Adjustments, the report from Crime Prevention Ottawa, from the Ottawa Police Service Board entitled Ottawa Police Service 2017 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets, the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board entitled Ottawa Public Library 2017 Draft Budget Estimates, and the report from the Ottawa Board of Health entitled 2017 Draft Operating Budget for the Ottawa Board of Health, as these reports relate to the 2017 draft operating and capital budgets being tabled at this meeting, and...
...report number nine from the Audit Committee, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 19, and Planning Committee Report 34 be received and considered, and that pursuant to section 35.5 of Procedure bylaw 2014-441, council receive and consider Planning Committee Report 35.
On the motion, carried. Last June, council directed that I work with our new city manager, Steve Katalakis, to deliver a budget that keeps the city on a path of fiscal prudence. I am pleased to report that we are bringing forward a balanced budget for 2017 while also setting the table for a balanced budget in 2018. We have listened to residents through the budget consultation process, and we've built that feedback into the draft 2017 budget that will be tabled momentarily.
We've received many ideas from our residents.
Including an affordable city for all residents, a caring city that uses its assets and resources to help residents succeed, a sustainable city with a commitment to transit and active mobility as central pillars of our current and future quality of life, a city that is refocused on strengthening the core municipal services that residents rely on, a prosperous and vibrant city where the arts, culture, and festivals play a dynamic role in diversifying our region's economy, particularly as we head into 2017, and a city that has an investment plan for innovation and job creation. Although we are looking forward to continuing our ongoing discussions on the budget, I'm pleased with the level of public consultation that has occurred to date. There have been six multi-ward councillor-led consultations, as well as two single-ward consultations in September and October. To date, the city has received budget ideas and feedback from residents, key partners, and stakeholders through a variety of ways, including the councillor-led budget consultations, the budget planning tool available on Ottawa.ca, the city's social media channel through 311, and via email at budget@ottawa.ca. As of November 3rd, there were 1,419 visits to the budget planning tool, with 245 completed responses. My thanks to councillor Tierney for initiating this new public engagement tool. All of the feedback from all of the channels has been consolidated and reviewed in the development of the 2017 draft budget. There are a number of new initiatives in budget 2017 that will strengthen our social safety net, instruments that will help residents succeed tomorrow and for years to come. Over the course of the last two years, we have been part of a meaningful debate about the challenge of providing residents with a more affordable transit pass. Members of council and the Transit Commission have listened to the calls for the city to fill the funding gap for residents falling through the existing support programs offered by OC Transport. Today, I'm pleased to announce that the city, working closely with the Chair of the Transit Commission, Stephen Blay, will introduce a transit pass for residents with low incomes. The regular adult general pass will cost $113.75 in 2017.
I am pleased to announce that the city will be introducing transit paths for residents with low incomes.
Monthly regular pass. The new pass will be called the Equipass. A single person using the Equipass will save $56 each month, or about $672 each year, leaving more money available for other basic necessities such as food, clothing, and accommodations. A family of two using the Equipass will save $112 each month for an annual savings of An estimated 4,700 transit users below the low-income cutoff currently use a monthly pass and would be eligible for the Equipass. OC Transport will introduce the Equipass beginning in April 2017, with implementation details coming early in the new year. This is the city's largest one-time increase in financial support to residents living below the low-income cutoff for public transit in the city's history. I strongly believe that this is a big step forward in building the type of city we all want, a city that gives residents with low incomes the opportunity to benefit from public transit at a deeply discounted monthly fare.
This new measure will allow us to build the type of city that we all want, that helps its residents who need to have more equity to have affordable fares.
Residents seeking employment, single parents, recent immigrants in Ottawa, settling in Ottawa, and for those residents temporarily out of work due to injury. And we're able to accomplish this while maintaining existing prices for other transit customers and while keeping our 2% tax cap commitment. This year, this year's budget, rather, will include a $500,000 reserve to respond to demands that might outpace our budget projections. The new Equipass will cost the city $2.2 million on an annual basis when fully implemented. The new pass will enable more residents to use our public transit system, and we're prepared to deal with this anticipated growth.
This new pass will enable more residents to use our public transit system, and we are prepared to deal with this anticipated growth.
Earlier this year, council asked the province to contribute funding for the transit pass for residents with low incomes, and we will continue to seek provincial funding moving forward. However, due to the result of assessment growth beyond what was forecasted, we are in a position to jump-start this program, and we will do this while continuing our efforts to encourage the province to help us provide an even deeper discount in the future. We are able to fund the new Equipass without eliminating other supportive passes. For example, some have suggested getting rid of the seniors pass or increasing the price for adult fares, and I do not support these proposals at all. Our proposal doesn't punish one group in order to help another. Budget 2017 also enacts council's decision to eliminate the express pass premiums effective January 1st, 2017, for 28,000 transit users.
Budget 2017 also enacts council's decision to eliminate the express pass premiums effective January 1st for 28,000 transit customers.
...Canada, Barhaven, and Orleans, who had previously had to pay express pass premiums. I want to thank our suburban councillors who advocated strongly on this issue, particular councillors Blay, Hubley, Monnet, Wilkinson, Harder, and Kakish. I'd like to now return to the important issue of better serving our transit customers as we prepare for the opening of the Confederation Line, LRT, in 2018. We have heard from our rural and suburban councillors that too many residents are finding it hard to commute to work or school because their peak hour buses are full. Budget 2017 does two things on this front. In collaboration with the government of Canada, we're acquiring 17 new buses to meet growth demands at a cost of $18.4 million. And secondly, we'll be protecting $1.7 million in the base budget to provide approximately 950,000 new customer trips each year. These new peak hours will serve the fast-growing communities of Stittsville, Canada South, Canada North, Barhaven South, Barhaven, and Riverside South, Lutrom, Findlay Creek, and Blossom Park, Lower Town and Sandy Hill, Rocklifelands, and Orleans, Chapel Hill South, and Avalon. These investments will provide transit customers from growth areas with more options to get into and out of the downtown core more easily at peak hours. These new routes will start in late 2017 after we take delivery of our new buses and will lay the foundation for growth in ridership for the Confederation Line and Stage 2 LRT. This expanded service will support the city's investment in the Confederation Line by increasing capacity to get to and from the LRT from busy parts of the city. As we move to increase the number of buses and improve bus routes, we are also keeping a steady focus on our long-term affordability plan. Because of council's steadfast commitment to the Confederation Line and Stage 2 LRT, both the provincial and federal governments are investing with confidence in the future of transit in Ottawa this coming year. As a result of the funding from all three levels of government, budget 2017 includes the important planning and design work needed to build Stage 2 LRT, a $90 million investment, of which $67 million will be spent in fiscal year 2017. Ottawa residents will be watching LRT come to life over the next few years.
Ottawa residents will be watching LRT come to life over the next few years, which marks the beginning of a new era in transit in Ottawa.
...to extend LRT farther east, rather farther west to Bay Shore and Algonquin College, farther east to Trim, and farther south to Riverside South and Bozville with a link to the Ottawa International Airport. We all know that a connected city will support our region's economic success for generations to come. Stage 2 will enable us to expand Ottawa's LRT network with more than 50 kilometers of rail. And budget 2017 also commits $3 million to the Bay Shore-to-Canada LRT environmental assessment, a critical milestone for the future expansion of LRT farther west. I want to thank West End councillors, including councillors Taylor, Wilkinson, Hubley, Cadri, and El Shantiri for their strong advocacy, and I'd also like to thank Member of Parliament Karen McCrimmon for helping to secure the federal funding for this environmental assessment. We'll also work, we'll also continue work on West Transitway extension with $47 million in funding. It will give transit customers a better experience between Bay Shore and Moody Drive thanks to the new dedicated transit lanes, which will get buses out of mixed traffic. Many of us, in fact, met on site yesterday to see the tremendous progress of this project together with Minister Bob Shirelli, who has secured funding for provincial part of the work, the sound attenuation barriers along the Queen's Way. I also want to thank all members of council for the tremendous teamwork that has allowed our city to make so much progress in such a short period of time with respect to LRT. We have accomplished more in six short years of LRT planning and construction than we ever dreamed possible. Thanks to this level of cooperation and commitment, we are able to speak with a renewed sense of purpose and confidence to our provincial and federal partners.
And we are working every day to gain and maintain the confidence of Ottawa residents. This is what will allow us to deliver results for our record investments in infrastructure, which will transform our city and our economy.
It is only one piece of keeping our city moving and improving our quality of life. Budget 2017 also continues our council's strong support for active mobility. It includes over $8 million of investments in cycling infrastructure through the Community Connectivity Plan, the Transportation Master Plan, the Cycling Strategic Initiative, and through investments in paved shoulders. This will add more than 38 kilometers of cycling facilities to the city's growing network. Budget 2017 includes $1.5 million to implement projects in the pedestrian plan, over $52 million for active mobility investments through the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund, and $5 million for various sidewalk improvements across the city. When combined with funding from the other levels of government, $73 million will be invested in cycling this term of council compared to $27 million in the last term of council.
When combined with funding with, from other levels of government, $73 million will be invested in cycling this term of council versus $27 million in the last term.
Represents a 270% increase over the last term of council for cycling initiatives, something we can be very proud of. This partnership is also allowing the city to advance a number of key cycling projects that will connect existing cycling network to our public transit network. I wish to thank the many councillors, including Transportation Committee Chair Keith Egli, and cycling advocates Catherine McKenna, Geoff Leaper, Monsieur Fleury, David Cherneschenko, and Toby Newsbaum for their support. 2017 will also see us break ground on the new $21 million pedestrian and cycling bridge at Clegg Street. This project is possible thanks to the strong partnership with the government of Canada, and we are confident that the province of Ontario will also commit to this project in the near future. My thanks to local MP and minister, the Honorable Catherine McKenna, for her advocacy on this important link, and to councillor David Cherneschenko for his... important link, and to councillor David Cherneschenko for his strong support of this bridge. The Clegg Street Bridge will not only provide pedestrian and cycling connections to Lansdowne Park, it will also provide access and improve access to Herdman and Lee's Light Rail train stations. The bridge will create an alternative crossing to the Bank Street Bridge, connect the downtown bike network to Old Ottawa East and Main Street, and will improve access to the Old Ottawa South-Northeast Bike Way via Riverdale Avenue. As we've seen with the Odawa Crossing and the Corkstown Crossing, when we build these facilities, they are used and used extremely well by residents and visitors alike. I'm pleased to report that Budget 2017 also heralds some very significant investments in the core municipal services that mattered most to residents. We've already heard from our Chair of Police Services, councillor Eliel Shantiri, that the Ottawa Police Service is adding 75 new police officers over three years, including 25 officers in 2017. Paramedic services will also see significant investments of 43 new frontline service providers between 2016 and 2018, with Budget 2017 delivering 24 new paramedics in this year.
In 2017, we will be recruiting 25 new police officers and 24 paramedics.
That this will lead to improved response times, particularly in our rural and suburban wards. Through the consultation process, we also heard that winter maintenance is an important issue for residents. I'm sure that you can all remember last winter as our public works staff grappled with extreme weather events that delivered one quarter of our total annual snowfall in just 18 hours. Ottawa spans more than 90 kilometers from west to east and has one of the largest municipal transportation networks in the country. To meet this challenge, Budget 2017 delivers a $4.5 million increase to the base budget for winter maintenance for a total increase of $9 million over the last two years. Maintaining our roads is not only a quality of life issue for commuters and transit users, it's also critical to the long-term success of our economy. Budget 2017 also invests $23 million for upgrades to rural roads, allowing the city to repair or resurface over 110 kilometers of roads in 2017 in the rural areas.
The state of our road network contributes greatly to the quality of life of residents.
...in matching funding from the federal government to provide funding, rather, to provide facilities for safer cycling routes for rural residents. My thanks to the rural councillors, Scott Moffett, Stephen Blay, Eliel Shantiri, and George DeRues for their advocacy. Citywide funding for tax-supported assets, including roads, structures, builds, buildings, and parks, continue to increase in line with council's comprehensive asset management direction, from $79 million in 2015 to $97 million in 2016 and $104 million in 2017. There's also an additional $1 million top-up over the next two years to our rural road upgrade, allowing us to repair more roads in the four rural wards. In total, the city is forecasting that $1.1 billion will be spent on capital or city building projects in 2017. Now, for every $1 billion investment in new infrastructure, 10,000-person years of employment, including 5,500 new jobs in the construction sector, are created in the local economy. This level of capital investment provides strong and immediate support to the local economy and will encourage growth and protect jobs and improve household and business confidence. We also heard loud and clear from residents, including the tens of thousands of families who use our city's parks and recreation facilities on a weekly basis, that access to quality recreation facilities is viewed as a core municipal service. Budget 2017 increases the four-year investment in parks and recreation capital renewal to $16.5 million, up from $6 million in the last term of council. My thanks to councillor Brockington for making sure this significant increase is included in the draft budget. There'll also be funding for growth projects funded by development charges to improve facilities across the city, from the building of the François Dupuy Recreation Centre to the addition of new facilities, including Canterbury's Covered Outdoor Rink, the Greeley Skateboard and BMX Park, and the Riverside South Recreation Complex.
In order to attract visitors to Ottawa, after our celebrations in 2017, we will focus our efforts on major national and international events.
To attract more visitors and businesses to our city post-2017, we will turn our attention to hosting major national and international events. This past spring, I hosted a tourism summit chaired by councillor Jean Cloutier to look for opportunities to sustain our momentum in the years to come. Toward that end, Budget 2017 includes funding to support Ottawa's bid to host the 2021 Canada Summer Games, spearheaded by our sports commissioner, Jody Midic. This could be our next 2017, and winning the Canada Summer Games could see us leverage funds from the provincial and federal governments to invest in our aging sports infrastructure while we get ready to host tens of thousands of visitors in July and August of 2021. I want to take a few moments to outline how Budget 2017 will help support the economic transformation of our city. More and more, Ottawa is being promoted for its quality of life, as a hub that's attracting people who want to enjoy all that our city has to offer. Budget 17, 2017, will invest in Canada's 150th celebrations, allowing us to proudly celebrate the greatest city in the most blessed country in the world. I don't have to tell any of you that Ottawa really is the greatest city to raise a family, to work in, to invest in, or simply to visit. Next year, the world will be watching as we celebrate 2017, and these celebrations will bring lasting economic benefits to our city. With what we have planned, we're expecting a 20% increase in tourism in 2017, which translates into an additional 1.75 million visitors to our city. This influx will bring a significant boost for our local hospitality and retail sectors.
This influx will bring a significant boost for our local hospitality and retail sectors.
That the Budget 2017 invests in our nation's 150th anniversary, our partners are coming to the table with more than four matching dollars. I call that a pretty good deal for Ottawa taxpayers, one that will create jobs, fill hotel rooms and restaurants, and forever transform the way we see our city and ourselves. This investment is part of a bolder and more aggressive vision of how we see our city's future, and a stronger vision of how we see ourselves. Ottawa is no longer the sleepy government town where restaurants in the core used to close shortly after dinnertime. Instead, we have become a city where people are excited to visit, they linger to enjoy the vitality of our downtown core because they, because there are now so many interesting things to see and do.
Even if we'll always be very proud of being at the heart of the presence of the federal government, it does not mean that our economy has to be in the shadow of the peace tower.
...the notion that the federal government alone would drive our economic prosperity. There are tens of thousands of entrepreneurs and innovators who call Ottawa their home. In 2017, we officially opened the Innovation Centre, a showcase for our city's best and brightest, creating the jobs of tomorrow today. Many are in high tech, many are in government, and many are in tourism and the service sector. And more will work in the increasingly dynamic arts, culture, heritage, and festivals networks. Working with our partners at Ottawa 2017, we're able to create two special funds to help nurture and grow our local talent and events through these celebrations. In partnership with Ottawa 2017, $500,000 in funding will be provided for two new initiatives. The first $250,000 fund will support the long-term marketing and growth of our festivals, while the second $250,000 fund will support exciting arts, culture, and heritage projects chosen by the community. We heard from the arts communities that they need our support, and we listened.
We've heard the call from the communities, the arts communities, and we have responded with the assistance they need.
Festivals and arts organizations to make 2017 even more memorable for our residents and visitors. There is no doubt that 2017 will be a tremendous year for our local artists and arts organizations. For over 30 years, local arts leader Peter Honeywell, along with thousands of artists and art enthusiasts, hoped and worked for a new municipal art gallery and a new hub for the local arts scene. In 2017, we will proudly witness the opening of the new Ottawa Art Gallery, which will be approximately three times the size of the existing space. Many of the city's hidden gems, including the donated works by the Firestone Collection, will be enjoyed by Ottawa residents and visitors alike when the new OAG opens in the fall of 2017. In the following year, we will open the redeveloped Arts Court facility, along with the new black box theatre, developed in partnership with the University of Ottawa. The OAG and Arts Court redevelopment project represents a public-private investment of over $100 million. The public sector component, valued at $38.8 million, is funded by the City of Ottawa, the Province of Ontario, and other partners, including the Ottawa Art Gallery and the University of Ottawa. The city's contribution of $17.67 million drawn from the citywide reserve fund, and the province has provided $7.3 million in funding. It is my hope, and I'm optimistic about this, that we will hear from the government of Canada on a request for federal funding for the Arts Court project, which will allow us to advance this project even further. Because there is so much happening in Ottawa in 2017, a number of groups have shared their concern that we don't want 2018 to be a big hangover year. Of course, we won't be able to replicate the excitement of 2017, we may not see this level of excitement again in our lifetime. However, we can be smart about how we invest to maintain the momentum of our local arts and cultural organizations into 2018 and beyond. That's why I'm pleased to announce that Budget 2017 will contribute $150,000 in base funding to launch the Arts Momentum Fund, aimed at ensuring we continue to showcase and promote our region's finest talent, not only locally, but to the province, to Canada, and to the rest of the world for years to come. This fund will serve to bring out the best in Ottawa's arts, culture, heritage, and festivals. We are already, or we are ready, rather, as a community to shine on the world stage. The Arts Momentum Fund will be adjudicated by local community leaders on the same model as our Ottawa 2017 partnership for funding arts, culture, and heritage projects. Given the long-term nature of this goal, I'm also proposing the same base investment of $150,000 through this new Arts Momentum Fund. With council's support, the Arts Momentum Fund will mean a total of $300,000 annually in new base funding for the arts by the end of 2018, an investment that will be rapidly recouped by increased tourism to Ottawa and increased economic activity in our city. This is in addition to the proposed 1.5% or $145,000 in new base funding for the arts in 2017. So in addition to the Ottawa 2017 funding and the New Arts Momentum funding, we will invest a record $11.2 million in our arts and festival programs this year. This is an increase of 11% over last year.
We will invest more than $11 million in arts, culture, and festivals this year.
Under the leadership of the Chair of the Ottawa Public Library, councillor Tim Tierney, Budget 2017 also includes $2 million in funding to enable us to continue the important work of planning our new central library, which is going to be one of the most exciting projects this city has ever undertaken. In Ottawa, we work in concert with community agencies, who are valued partner in the delivery of essential, basic services to residents and neighborhoods across our city. Although we are an affluent city, at some point in our lives, for many of us, accessing the most basic necessities can be a challenge. That is why we invest $22 million in community funding to 94 agencies that run hundreds of essential programs across the entire city. And this funding is leveraged by dollars from other sources, including investments from donors and other levels of government. Through the efforts of these agencies, the city also leverages over 23,000 community volunteers. Hundreds of thousands of residents are helped through these crucial community programs and services each year. We've heard from community service providers that a growing number of pressing needs of families and individuals are going unmet because of our city's rapid growth. That's why the 2017 draft budget includes an increase of $610,000 in new base funding for the 94 agencies that run these vital services. The $110,000 is an increase, to increase the inflationary provision from 1.5% to 2%, and $500,000 to help funded agencies sustain services while dealing with growing needs and pressures. This additional funding will support people in need with things that many of us take for granted, such as a hot meal, laundry services, or a hot shower, a safe place to get away from violence, or simply for clothes like mittens, hats, and scarves. This funding also support, this funding will also support agencies that deliver healthcare referrals, street outreach, counselling, employment services, and mental health supports. This funding is complemented by our ongoing $16 million of annual commitment towards the 10-year housing and homelessness plan, in addition to the childcare modernization and social assistance reform. I wish to thank in particular councillor Mark Taylor, our special liaison for housing and homelessness, councillor Michael Kakish, our special liaison for refugees, and councillor Diane Deans for their strong advocacy for these additional funds. Ottawa will also benefit from recent federal and provincial funding announcements for housing. Specifically, Ottawa has received from the federal and provincial governments $2.8 million from the Homelessness Partnership Strategy, $16 million for social housing repairs, $19 million for investment in affordable housing program, $12 million through the Social Housing Apartment retrofit program, $3 million for the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative, and almost $4 million for a Survivors of Domestic Violence pilot project. We'll also be working to reduce youth homelessness through the provisions of rent supplements and unemployment supports. Just last week, for instance, the province of Ontario announced an additional $38 million for our city through the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative in 2019, 2020. Ottawa has demonstrated local leadership within the housing and homelessness sector, fostering strong partnership and implementing progressive initiatives. We are well positioned to leverage new funding opportunities that may be rolled out as part of the federal Phase Two Social Infrastructure Program that I had the opportunity to talk to the Finance Minister at the federal level two weeks ago about. With 20, with Budget 2017, Ottawa will also be taking action on our environment.
We will also be taking action on the environment.
To reduce electricity consumption by 6% and natural gas consumption by 15% by 2020. Towards that end, the city of Ottawa supports Energy Evolution, a community-led plan to transform Ottawa into a thriving city powered by clean energy. Energy Evolution includes more than 80 community partners, such as the City of Ottawa, Hydro Ottawa, Enbridge, the Ottawa Centre Eco District, Ecology Ottawa, Museum of Science and Technology, and the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce. Energy Evolution, formerly known as the Renewable Energy Strategy, is a term of council priority that we've all supported, aimed at increasing energy conservation, energy efficiency, and supporting renewable energy in Ottawa, including solar and wind generation. Budget 2017 will provide $300,000 in strategic funding that will be used to build on existing stakeholder initiatives and leverage provincial and federal climate change investments expected in 2017 and 2018. Examples of specific projects could include, but are not limited to, implementing a heat recovery plan for City Hall that would draw excess heat from the data center and the Rink of Dreams and direct it back into the building, and piloting a community financing program for a complete energy retrofit of an Ottawa community housing multi-unit residential building. These are just a few examples of partnership opportunities that could be enabled through the Energy Evolution Strategy. Potential projects will be confirmed in a progress report to the Environment Committee in early 2017 under the stewardship of councillor Cherneschenko. The second major environmental initiative will be funded through Budget 2017 is the Urban Forest Canopy Cover Project. A healthy urban tree canopy not only helps to reduce the urban heat effect during our hot summer months, but it also absorbs odors and pollutant gases and filters particles out of the air we breathe. The Urban Forest Canopy Cover Project will produce the tools necessary to guide decisions and ultimately maximize investments in urban trees across our city. By protecting our tree monitoring and reporting, we can make more informed decisions to protect and expand our urban canopy cover. In 2017, the city will, has 125,000 new trees planned to take root, increasing the forest cover in urban, suburban, and rural areas. These trees will assist in replenishing areas that were ravaged by the Emerald Ash bore. We will also be making a one-time contribution of $200,000 to the environmentally sensitive lands acquisition fund. In addition, the city will mark 2017 with the 150 Maple Grove Project, planting a grove of 150 Canadian maple trees as a living legacy of our celebrations in each and every ward.
In honor of the 150th anniversary of Canada, we will be planting 150 Canadian maple trees in each neighborhood of the city, which will remain as memories of these celebrations.
Include the expansion of light rail transit projects, investments in transit demand, transportation demand management strategy for employees in the NCR, and of course, the continuation of sustainable design neighborhoods where residents have access to multiple transportation options, including safe, active transportation routes. Councillor Jan Harder should be commended for the excellent work that she and her team have undertaken in building better suburbs. Hydro Ottawa, our key Hydro Ottawa, our key partner in environmental initiatives, is the largest municipally-owned producer of green power in the Province of Ontario, something we can be very proud of, generating enough renewable energy to power sixty-two thousand homes annually. Through a partnership with Energy Ottawa, the LED Street Lighting Conversion Project will continue citywide. This project will reduce the city's electrical use for street lighting by fifty percent and will reduce our annual electricity costs. By the end of this project, up to fifty-eight thousand streetlights will have been converted to LED. The federal and provincial governments have recently been making some exciting investments in municipal infrastructure and services. In addition to the federal gas tax funds, both the federal and provincial governments have announced new program funding for transit, for water, and wastewater, and for housing. These funds enable the city to move forward on council's long-term plans and address some priority needs. So far, Ottawa has received commitments for three hundred and eleven million dollars in new or enhanced transit projects, a hundred and fifteen million dollars in water and wastewater projects, and thirty-five million dollars in affordable and social housing projects, all of which must be substantially completed by the end of 2018. This is in addition to the June 2016 commitment by the province of over one billion dollars for Stage Two LRT and for the TRIM and airport extensions. As you know, city council nurtures ongoing formal relationships with many community partners and stakeholder groups like the Alliance to End Homelessness, the Community Health and Resource Centers, the Council of the Arts, Arts East Ottawa, and the Aboriginal Working Group, just to name a few. Our commitment to long-term planning and the strength of these ongoing partnerships has positioned Ottawa to respond quickly to the federal and provincial calls for projects. For the 2017-18 horizon, federal and provincial funding is allowing much-needed public transit infrastructure to proceed ahead of schedule, including one point five million dollars for new sidewalk links to improve connections with public transit, and another three point five million dollars for multi-use pathway, rather, three point five million dollars for sidewalk renewal across the city, four point three million dollars for multi-use pathway renewal, thirty million dollars for transportation demand management and bus detours during LRT construction, to name just a few. And Budget 2017 shows what we can accomplish as a city when we work as a team and we set clear goals.
Budget 2017 shows what we can accomplish as a city when we work as a team and set clear goals. I'm very proud of the balance that we have obtained.
has achieved. I am proud of the degree of collaboration we have shown with, as a city, to develop this budget. And this year, we have also witnessed a renewed sense of cooperation with stakeholders and other levels of government. By working together, we have been able to align mandates to leverage outcomes for residents and to invest in our social and physical infrastructure of our city. These investments have been designed to be inclusive for all residents. We challenged our city manager, Steve Katalakis, to deliver a balanced budget for the remainder of this term. The new management team and our very capable general manager of Corporate Services and City Treasurer Marion Similak and Deputy Treasurer Isabelle Jasmin worked diligently to find the funding for these important priorities. I want to thank Steve, Marion, and Isabelle, and your teams for your hard work and for the dozens of meetings we had on Budget 2017 together. I would be remiss not to take this opportunity to thank the entire team in Corporate Services for delivering this balanced budget. Steve, I want to personally thank you for your work and leadership in helping to balance the city's books and for making what I know were tough decisions in an open and responsible way. And gros merci à Steve, Marion.
A big thank you to Steve, Marion, and their teams.
savings while impacting less than one percent of the city's workforce. The work of your team has reset the foundation of our budget so that council and the city can reinvest in core services that matter most to the Ottawa residents. As you have followed, council's guidance of delivering a balanced budget within the framework of a citywide two percent tax cap. I want to take a few minutes, in my last couple of minutes, to reflect on what this means to Ottawa residents. Striving to maintain an affordable city is not a slogan. Living within your manes is a challenge for thousands of Ottawaans every single day. In Ottawa, there are two hundred and ninety-three thousand and sixty-five individuals or families that receive a municipal tax bill. I don't know many that pay their taxes in two lump sum payments. Most people pay their taxes in installments or as part of their mortgage payment. We all know that the City of Ottawa can't control how much taxes increase from other levels of government or the rate of inflation. But the biggest element we have direct control over is property taxes. That's why I'm proud that this council set and is honoring its two percent tax cap. I'm proud that we are keeping our promise on taxes because there are tens of thousands of seniors living on fixed incomes in their homes in our city. And the last thing any of us want to hear about is a senior being evicted from their home due to high property taxes. I'm proud that we're keeping our two percent tax cap promise because there are thousands more young homeowners just starting out who are being hard hit by MPAC's market value assessment this year that will already increase their taxes significantly. This is happening in many wards across Ottawa, such as Kitchicipi, Rideau-Goulburn, Capital, Stittsville, and Canada North. In fact, the hardest-hit ward is Kitchicipi, where the average MPAC increase is over seven percent. Budget 2017 is proof that we can have an affordable city for all while investing in the things that matter most to our residents.
Budget 2017 is proof that we can have an affordable city for all while investing in the things that matter most to our residents.
And we are showing that we can and will balance the competing demands of being both an affordable and a caring city. I want to thank all members of council who contributed ideas to the 2017 budget process, including many great ideas from their residents. I also want to thank all chairs and committee members for their input to date and for their work ahead to facilitate the budget through their respective committees.
Thank you to all councillors for their ideas and major input in this budget process.
instrumental in getting us to this draft 2017 budget. I want to remind all members of council why I'm so adamant at keeping our budget and our city affordable. Many councillors in fact campaign on keeping taxes at or below the rate of inflation. Inflation is now running at one point three percent. What I'm proposing is a reasonable compromise between those who want no specific limit on taxes and those who want less than two percent. I would like to close by thanking my own team in the mayor's office for working closely with our city manager on Budget 2017. Budgets have and will continue to be about setting priorities. It's about being upfront with constituents and not trying to be all things to all people. Budgets are about the kind of city we want to strive for, one that is thoughtful and progressive, and one that is also affordable. I believe that Budget 2017 achieves these goals, and I look forward to your ongoing public consultation and your input as we begin the 2017 budget process. Thank you very much. Councillor Taylor, please.
Councillor Taylor.
The city manager, and then a more in-depth presentation by the deputy city treasurers. Mr. Katalakis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Watson.
It's an honor for me and the city treasurer to present the preliminary budget for 2017.
reflects what I have heard in the six months of collaborative dialogue that I've had as your city manager with elected officials, with stakeholders, and with staff about what we need to do as a city to live and grow within our manes, to continue to deliver top-quality services, to take care of our neighborhoods and our neighbors, and to make sure we deliver on this term of council's priority projects. I hope as you go through each of the books in the days ahead that you will see that this draft budget is your budget and the community's budget. To that end, I would like to first thank the mayor and council as a whole, as I've been through all kinds of budgets and budget processes at this city in my career. And I can tell you that it's much easier for staff to develop a budget for you when you give us clear direction.
I'd also like to thank each member of council.
In this budget process, it's a time every member of council took to meet with me beginning my first week here in May, right up until yesterday. Each of you has the pulse of your ward and of the organization, and you all took the time to keep me informed and give me the benefit of your perspective and your advice. You made sure I understood the concerns of your residents and knew their priorities.
You have talked about the objectives of the city as a whole.
You also let me know what was challenging the organization and the things you saw that were blocking success. I can tell you that what you told me was confirmed by all the feedback I received from staff heading into the challenge of changing how we do our business. I would like the public listening to know that your advice was invaluable. It informed me not only in our work on the organizational changes, but also the developments of the 2017 draft budgets. I'd also like to thank those key city stakeholders that took the time to meet me over the past six months. I literally met over a hundred stakeholders. The list is too long to thank each one here, but you know who you are. And I hope you will see that your feedback was heard and reflected as much as possible in this draft budget.
Finally, I'd like to thank city staff for their work in this renewal period and revitalization.
I believe that this is change for the better. Change that allows staff to get back to focusing on why we all work for the municipal government. We want to serve the public to the best of our ability and to make a difference to the community in which we live. With your support and with our common goals, your senior leadership team, who I'm joined by today, are very proud to be able to deliver all the savings needed to address the 2017 and the 2018 growth pressures in one year this year. Those savings have made it possible for us to work with the mayor to develop on your directions, to bring forward a draft budget that provides financial stability for the remainder of your term, service improvements for core services, and most importantly, balances the need for both social services for the people that we need to help the most and our hard infrastructure. The deputy city treasurer will walk you through the high-level numbers, and the next phase of public input will begin. We're available to answer your questions over the coming weeks. And speaking on behalf of the senior leadership team, we are looking forward to hearing from you in the public on what we have presented, and then towards delivering on all of your major city-building programs and projects in 2017 and 18. I'd now like to ask Isabelle Jasmin, our deputy city treasurer, to present further details on the draft 2017 budget.
Thank you, Steve. So today's presentation is an overview of all the budgets and is a combined amount. This includes police, public health, library, and transit. Only a summary is provided here today, and the detailed budgets will be presented individually to each committee, board, and commission. It is important to note that this budget does not entirely reflect the new organizational structure. While the new departmental names are reflected, there was not enough time to fully realign the cost center structure to reflect the new structure. This also means that the FTE analysis is not presented either. Once council adopts the budget, staff will do the work necessary to ensure cost centers are appropriately reassigned, and the final 2017 budget will fully reflect the new structure. Today's budget reflects the direction approved by council on October 12th. In this presentation, I will provide an overview of the tax and rate-supported operating budget and capital budget, and will quickly review the budget timetable for those who would like to get involved during the budget review process. The budget directions were approved in October, and one of the key items was to limit the municipal portion of the residential property tax bill to two percent. This would also apply to commercial properties for a citywide tax levy of two percent. As directed by council and as identified in the Transit Affordability Plan, this budget also includes a two point five percent increase to the transit levy. The annual additional taxation reviews for growth is forecasted at one point three percent. This is the same as what was set last year.
The committees and the commissions were all asked to establish their numbers, and we were asked to contribute to the program in order to maintain our assets in well, in working order. In 2017, we will update the long-term projects for capital budgets and transit.
to use the tax stabilization reserve to cover the costs of implementing the efficiency strategies. The draft 2017 budget limits the citywide and police tax increases to two percent for a person owning a house in an urban area where the average valuation is three hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred. The increase corresponds to fifty-five dollars per year for municipal services.
City council also approved a transit increase of two point five percent, which translates in an increase of fifteen dollars for residential ratepayers. Waste collection also will increase by two percent or two dollars for the average residential ratepayer. This translates to twelve dollars.
See an increase of seventy-two dollars per year, rural homes sixty dollars per year, and commercial property a hundred and seven per year. The dollar value is a preliminary number. The actual amount will be based on the actual valuation of the properties and changes to the tax policy adopted by council before finalizing the tax rates. These amounts don't account for changes resulting from reassessment. The increase being proposed for the water and sewer budget, the rate budgets, as we refer to them, is five percent. And this was identified in the Long Range Financial Plan that was adopted in 2012. For an average household with a yearly consumption of two hundred and twenty cubic meters of water, this represents an annual increase of approximately forty-five dollars. Council recently approved a new stormwater rate for most properties. We will be phasing in the stormwater rate for those that are not currently paying a water bill. The first phase, or twenty-five percent of the stormwater fee, will be implemented in 2017. The 2017 fee is not included in the 2017 budget books, but will be included in the 2017 tax rate and ratio report that will be brought to city council through the Finance and Economic Development Committee. For those receiving a water bill, the new water, wastewater, and stormwater fee will be implemented in 2018. The preliminary budgets, as table, takes into account the various FTE positions required to provide municipal services in 2017. For all services, we need a total of fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety FTEs. This is a net reduction of seventy-nine FTEs based on 2016 levels. Police are recommending an increase of twenty-eight FTEs and city departments twenty-five point three two FTEs, primarily for the twenty-four additional parabetics. The reduction of fifty FTEs in 2016 was achieved, and a hundred and thirty-two point two four FTE reductions in 2017 are the result of the recent Phase One and Phase Two reorganization.
City has a total budget of three point two six seven billion dollars. You can see on this illustration all the various services that we provide. The five major services represent fifty-eight point six percent of the total budget. Transit budgets is fifty-three million, social and community services, four hundred and forty-three million, water and wastewater services, fifty-six, police, seventy-seven billion. And for the first time, emergency services is in sixth place, and it's a training budget that end up to three hundred and nine.
five in spending, surpassing emergency and protective services. This demonstrates the council's strategy to continue to increase investment in infrastructure to maintain assets in a state of good repair. This next graph shows all the sources of funding for the three point two two six seven billion. You will note there are not as many slices in this graph. We have two main sources of funds. We have taxpayers, and we have those who use the services, and most residents are both. The five hundred and ninety-four million shown for the federal and provincial funding represents all grants that are directed towards particular services, such as, such as social, social services, childcare services, long-term care, and others. These conditional grants are not available to use for any other purposes. So user fees and services charges, and service charges of eight hundred and nineteen million and property taxes of one point five billion are the main sources of revenue to support the operations of the city. We will now look at the operating budgets. As mentioned earlier, this presentation provides a summary total of all tax budgets combined, including police, public health, library, and transit. Council must approve a balanced budget. An additional one hundred and nine million of spending pressures were identified for 2017 and 2018. The net pressures associated with 2018 amounted to seven point two million and were also addressed in this budget as per the city manager's plan to deliver all the required efficiency savings for the remaining term of council in time to be included in the 2017 operating capital budgets. The spending pressures related to 2016 base adjustments, maintaining operations, growth, and council priorities were offset by increases in funding from revenue, taxes, and fees of seventy-seven point five million and thirty-one point three million in efficiencies. Now we'll provide additional details for each of them. The funding capacity that has been created as a result of tax increases, user fee increases, and revenue that are receiving, we are receiving from other levels of government, total seven seven point five million. Of that, user fees and charges, and this would be non-transit services, is eleven point seven million. Three point eight million is from regular. $3.8 million is from regular inflationary increases, which is in line with council's fiscal framework, and the remainder is from increased hydro dividends, PILT revenue, additional red light revenue, and interest earnings. This draft budget recommends a 1.25% increase in the total transit fares starting January 1, which is projected to generate $2.4 million in additional revenues. The 1.25% taking effect in January is the equivalent of last year's increase of 2.5% which took effect in July. The matching funding from provincial cost sharing is increasing by $13.5 million. $5.7 million of that is from the provincial upload to cover the costs of Ontario Works, $3.8 million from caseload increases, and $4 million in other growth and program changes in social services, long-term care, and paramedics. For tax and assessment growth, we are projecting a 1.3% increase in the value of the assessment roll from new properties, which generates $19 million in taxes. The 2% overall tax revenue increase plus the 2.5% increase in the transit levy generates another $30.9. In developing the draft budget, one of our first tasks is to review the current year performance against budget to identify any adjustments that need to be made to the base budget. We look at what happened in the previous year, where there were cost or revenue increases or decreases that we had not anticipated and that are of permanent nature. This table shows the key factors from 2016 that will have an impact on 2017. We've eliminated the one-time funding transfer from fleet reserves of $11.5 million that was identified last year to address the projected budget shortfalls. WSIB changes to eligible illnesses has created an additional $1 million pressure for fire. We've added an additional base adjustment of $4.5 million to winter operations based on KPMG's recommendations, which is in addition to last year's base adjustment of the same amount. Services that must operate on a 24/7 basis cannot achieve the same level of vacancy targets as other services, which adds a pressure of $1.2 million. We've also included the annualization of the additional police and paramedics positions of $2 million. There's also an increase in assessment growth from 2016 of $4.2 million and additional savings from the 2016 for the 50 FTE reductions that were realized earlier than expected of $2 million. Next, we identify the costs to maintain the services that we are already providing. Labor costs, as usual, are the largest increase overall, and this is to be expected given the fact that 40% of overall costs in the city are related to labor. The inflation in materials and contracts is budgeted at $16.8 million, and due to fuel hedging, there is a budgeted reduction in fuel costs for transit and public works of approximately $4 million. The increase to reserves and debt charges is the inflationary increase in the contribution to capital to keep up with inflation and ensure that we are not losing ground in terms of what is needed for the capital spending. $3.5 million of the $6.6 million increase goes towards debt charges.
In terms of growth, we've allocated $14.8 million for growth. This is reflected in the higher number of households and the maintenance of new facilities and new parks in the city because sometimes we have to assume the cost. So this reflects the trend towards the increase of these services, $1.3 million for police services, as well as recruiting 25 police officers.
...reserves to help pay for renewal of the asset base due to growth. There is $24 million identified for council priorities. Firstly, there is $5.1 million that we set aside for council priorities from the provincial upload. In 2017, these funds are shifting from operating SIs to capital SIs, such as the class project, transit initiatives, and other capital strategic initiatives. There's also a $5.4 million increase to your contribution to capital, which is the amount identified in the LRFP as an increase each year to address the infrastructure gap and to reach an investment level that maintains our assets in a state of good repair. $2.7 million to fund a low-income bus pass, the EquaPass, for those living below the low-income cutoff. As mentioned earlier, this budget addresses the budget pressures in 2017 and 2018. The 2018 net budget pressure of $7.2 million has been addressed in this budget and will be used as a one-time contribution to operations and capital in 2017. These one-time funds will be used for initiatives mentioned by the mayor in his speech, such as rural roads rehabilitation, contribution to the environmentally sensitive lands acquisition fund, Parks and Recreational Renewal Fund, the Great Canadian Theatre Company, Energy The first phase of the administrative restructuring began on July 13, 2016. It reduced the executive team from 21 to nine members with clearer lines of accountability. Departments were consolidated based on service areas allowing for simplified reporting relationships and clearer mandates, and efficiencies of $1.5 million was achieved. In the second phase of the organizational realignment was completed in the first week of October. This alignment resulted in change for approximately 1,400 employees, 50 management FTEs, and 74.24 business support FTEs were eliminated, resulting in an additional $16.9 million savings for a total of $18.4. An additional $10.8 million in service efficiencies were identified, $6 million in fleet, $2.7 million in winter operations, $1 million for facilities, and $1.1 million for various other operational efficiencies. Police and public health have also identified efficiencies totaling $2.1 million. The rate increase is 5%, so if you take last year's budget revenue, increase it by 5%, you would generate an additional $18.3 million. Like the tax budget, the rate budget has to be balanced. This additional revenue is offset by additional expenditures. The increase of $4.5 million to maintain operations is primarily for projected 2017 labor contract settlements of $2.5 million, along with increases for hydro of $1.3 million. In 2016, the city had to reduce the capital contribution by $2.9 million to make up for declining water consumption. In '27, we are able to make up for that and increase the capital contribution by $7 million. Increased investment in capital and increased debt will also increase debt servicing for rate by $6.4 million. We will now look at the capital budgets. In the last term of council, several major studies were completed and approved by council. They include transportation master plan, the 2014 development charges background study, and the LRFP-IV that assess the state of repairs of all capital assets and recommended a plan for closing the infrastructure funding gap. These plans have all been incorporated in the proposed capital budget for 2017 and the forecast for the subsequent three years. We also have the funding envelope for council priorities. Debt is being used in this budget as described in the fiscal framework within the limits established by council. We are forecasting 5.8% of own-source revenues on the tax side and 12.7% on the rate side for 2017, which is compared to 11.3% in 2016. The tax-supported capital budget for 2017 includes public transit, police services, and library. This budget totals $604 million. The capital budget for water and sewer program stands at $276.4 million. The capital budget is mainly required for renewal of infrastructure, and for water and sewer represents about 85% of the rate capital budget. Compared to 2016, the total capital budget has increased by $347 million, primarily due to the additional federal and provincial infrastructure funding, but also because the city is increasing its investment in infrastructure renewal to maintain assets in a state of good repair. The Light Rail Phase 2 capital forecast does not include the full cost of Phase 2. Staff are working on updating the Transit Long Range Financial Plan, which is planned for the first quarter of 2017 and will include estimates of the full cost of that project and funding model. The proposed $880.4 million capital budget is funded from a variety of sources, but basically it is cash and debt. For 2017, revenues from other governments makes up a significantly higher proportion of the funding than in previous years, up from 8.2% in 2016 to 31% in 2017. $272.8 million is coming from other levels of government. The reserves portion, which is cash, and is funded from contributions to capital on both the tax and the rate side. This makes up 38% of the funding for capital. There's also some DC cash and debt to fund growth projects. In total, there is $116.8 million in new debt authority that is required to fund the proposed 2017 capital program, which is lower than last year's figure of $163.6 million of new debt. There's also a separate category of debt for the PTIF projects, which is considered temporary debt that will be refinanced by future projects since most of the PTIF projects are simply projects that were advanced. Based on the draft 2017 capital budget, net debt for the city is forecasted to be $1.78 billion by the end of the year, compared to $1.69 billion projected net debt for 2016. What is important to note is that although total net debt is increasing each year, so is the city's total investment in assets, while maintaining debt servicing within established targets. In the past five years, net debt as a percentage of the total cost of assets has decreased from 9.2% to 8.7%. This slide summarizes the significant investment the city is making in transit, water, sewer, and affordable housing projects thanks to federal and provincial infrastructure funding. These projects have been included in the 2017 draft budget document and are listed in a section within the appropriate standing committee document. Included in the transmittal report is a Q3 forecast for 2016. We are currently projecting a small surplus for tax-supported programs and $13.7 million surplus for rate, primarily due to the increase in water consumption in 2017 due to the weather. Restructuring costs have not been fully costed yet and are not included in the Q3 forecast. The year-end disposition report will be submitted to FedCo and council in early 2017. This slide provides a forecast of the 2016 and 2017 year-end reserves balances. These reflect the current forecast and may vary once we close the year. However, based on current forecasts and input from the draft 2017 operating capital budget, reserves overall are projected to increase from $316.9 million to $375 million. Lastly, on the budget timetable, we have the budget meeting scheduled on the 22nd running until December 8th. It is at these meetings that individuals can ask about particular items in the budget. All the information is available on the website, and the public is invited to come to the committee meeting to discuss what is of concern to them. To provide comments on the draft budget, residents can email budget@ottawa.ca or contact their local board councillor. Council will meet on December 14th to consider the draft budget and any recommendations stemming from the budget meetings, and it is at that point that the budget will be adopted. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, I want to offer my thanks to senior management and staff who supported this budget process, in particular the finance staff. I want to send my heartfelt appreciation to the finance teams led by Brian Flynn, the planning team led by Tom Fettick, for all the great work that they do. A special thank you to Tom Fettick, sitting next to me. All the great... Sorry. Special thank you to Tom Fettick, who will be retiring next year, and this will likely be his last budget for the city. He has played an integral role each year in bringing this budget to council, and he will leave a big hole in this organization, but leaves a very capable and strong team to carry us forward next year. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Tom, and thank you very much for your service to our community. 2017 Draft Operating Estimates Committee of Adjustment received and tabled. Crime Prevention Ottawa, Draft Operating Budget Crime Prevention Ottawa, budget de fonctionnement premier pour prévention du crime d'At Ottawa, received and tabled. Ottawa Police Services Board, councillor Elshen Thiery, and Chief Bordelot, and Director General Fraser have their presentation.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to present the Ottawa Police Service Budget for 2017. The budget developed by the service followed the board's direction after 2% tax increase. It includes the hiring of an additional 25 new sworn member on the top of those being hired for retirement. And just to clarify for my colleague, I've been asked time and time again where those 25 will be deployed. Well, that goes to the chief, as he is in his authority to deploy the people where it's needed the most. But I can assure you that 25 from 2016 and the additional 25 2017 and 25 officer for 2018 is going to help on all fronts with the organization. It is also identified $2 million in efficiency and expenditure reductions. The budget continued to provide funding for the information management and information technology roadmap and the facilities strategic plan. We also continue our work, the service initiative, to ensure we are as effective as possible in the deployment of our resources. 2017 will be a challenging year for the Ottawa Police as our members ensure the safety and security of our city at various celebrations of Canada's birthday. Before I pass this to the chief, I wanted to remind council that all members are welcome at the board's finance and audit committee meeting on November 17, where we will be happy to answer any question you have about our budget. Also, on the board on November 28, that's the board meeting when we receive the budget and carry the budget, and also on December 14, the chief and his team will be present on council, but Mr. Mayor will follow the mayor's direction. Councillor has been encouraged to attend all boards' budget and committee budget when they have questions about the line-by-line budget. With that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you very much, members of council and Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to present the draft budget for police services. I'm with Ms. Fraser, Director General, Mr. Littornau, who's a finance director.
...for working diligently in preparing this year's, next year's budget. From a policing context perspective, policing is certainly evolving rapidly across North America, here in Ontario and in Canada and in Ottawa. From a demographic and social needs perspective, we have an aging population, which from a policing perspective increases our needs to deal with an increasing number of missing people dealing with dementia. And so that certainly has an impact on our already-stretched resources. From a mental health perspective, we have a system that is failing or is fractured with respect to dealing and supporting people with mental illness, and we're seeing an increasing calls for service for people that are in crisis. As you well know, there's an increasing level of violence that is happening in major urban centers, and there's an increasing propensity for young people to resort to violence more quickly, and we've seen a number of senseless deaths and injuries as a result of that violence. From a legislative perspective, we have examples like the new street check regulations imposed by the province, which will have a significant impact on how our officers collect and deal with information on the streets, and we have recent court decisions as well. And one example I use is last year, in order to obtain an ISP address, it would take a simple two-minute phone call. Now, to obtain that information, it's a two-day process, including the obtaining of a warrant, which is not to say that's wrong, but it certainly adds to the complexity of investigations. We have increased accountability and transparency requirements to ensure that our taxpayers... to ensure that our tax dollars are well spent and that there's transparency around that. And from the community's perspective, there's a growing need and the diversity of the requirements from the policing perspective. We have, you know, medical marijuana dispensaries that have propped up, which is something that we did not have to deal with in the past. Increase in traffic safety, and there's a requirement for more police presence and visibility and quicker response times. So all those are impacting the way we are doing business, and it's forced us to really revisit how we are delivering our policing services. We want to become smarter. We want to be more intelligence-led and more evidence-based in deploying the resources where we need them and when we need them. And, you know, the introduction of our operations center is new this past month, which will help us deploy our resources in a more effective way. And we know that we are changing our service delivery model, and there's been concern expressed in the community with respect to our community policing. I can assure you that we are maintaining the tenants and the principles of community policing, the need to be proactive, the need to be problem solvers, and the need to have points of contact. So that's why we are implementing our service initiative. To look at the 2017 horizon, we still have three key operational priorities: to deal with the gun and gang violence taking place in our community along with other major urban centers, the issue that is still prevalent of violence against women, and traffic safety. As council has heard repeatedly, 2017 is a big year for our community and to celebrate Canada's 150th celebrations. We do have a number of known events that are taking... We do have a number of known events that are taking place, and we are working closely with our city partners to identify those that do require policing presence. There's about 10 of those, and we've estimated the impact at $1.5 million, which will be outside our current budget requirements, and we're hoping to seek funding from either paid-duty sources or other levels of government. And those are the known events. There are events that are being talked about that will have a significant impact on policing. And I'll just use the example of last night's elections results in the United States. Having a president like Obama visit Canada is a much more friendly visit and does require a lot of planning, but from a demonstration perspective, doesn't have the realities of the new president in the States. So that's our reality, and we have to deal and manage that. You know, the first external visit of a US president is usually in Canada, so don't know if that's going to happen or not, but certainly that's a reality we now are faced. You know, from a transformational perspective, our police service will continue to implement the service initiative, and on January 23rd, that's the date that we implement our frontline delivery model. And a number of events have impacted the relationship, the trust and confidence in policing, not just here in Ottawa but across North America. So I think that reinforces the need for us to continue to work hard to ensuring that we maintain and build on that strong relationship that we have with our growing community. I'll turn it over now to Director-General Fraser.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, members of council. We'll just walk through a few of the high-level numbers that encapsulate the police budget. You've already heard some of these numbers when the deputy treasurer spoke about the budget in total, but as a separate tax rate, you'll see these numbers come down when the police tax rate is singled out on its own. So in total, our budget increase, the net budget increase for police this year is proposed at $8.9 million. That brings our net operating budget to a total of just under $290 million, that's $285.9 million. The police tax rate then would be 2%, and for an average homeowner, that's $11. We'll have a look then at what the $8.9 million comes down to, and it's pretty simple. As we've, you know, spoken about in the past, policing isn't a very complicated business from many perspectives, certainly from the asset perspective. It's, we're primarily a service business, so you'll see that most of any increase in the police budget comes about in the category that's deemed maintained services. That's primarily where the salary increases are. So we provided $7.1 million of the $8.9 for anticipated changes in salaries due to collective agreement settlements. We're currently starting negotiations with the sworn and civilian members, and that number is meant to cover off the expected salary changes as well as the impact of officers and civilians moving through the steps of their salary provisions. We also carry about $300,000 in that amount for our facility strategic plan, which has been about since 2013, actually. It's a 17-year plan, so we're starting to hit the midpoint of our plan. The 25 officer plan, this is the 2017 portion, it's 25 officers. That's the cost to hire that group, half in about April, half in September, and also includes the annualization impact of last year's class coming forward and moving up a rank. The IMIT roadmap, that's, we're in year three of the IMIT roadmap funding, it's $2 million. You'll see when we talk on the capital side, I'll describe some of the matching capital work that you'll see happening. It's going to change the way we do business in Ottawa in terms of policing, and it'll help to ensure that in future we can continue to provide efficiencies. Changing how you do work in policing means bringing new tools to the table to automate. User fees and charges, it's $300,000. We adjust the user fees and charges by the rate of the tax rate each year, so that's that amount. We've continued our efficiency program. It's been about $2 million for the last few years. If you look at over five years, it's $11.3 million. That's a plan we'll continue into the future because we're finding through these transformation initiatives that there are different ways for policing to do business, and roughly that's a $2 million savings per year. $8.9 million then is the net increase in the budget. What we've highlighted here is the strategy for Canada's 150th celebrations. Our planning team so far has identified 10 major events where our effort will be beyond the expected that we could provide through normal operations. We will do that duty through some form of overtime. We expect to be able to fund the overtime either through paid duties, which means another party pays for it, or by recovering that cost from other levels of government. And that's why we've shown this as a net. We don't plan to tax for a peak expense, that's not a strong tax strategy. But what's clear is that if we are unable or unsuccessful in recovering those costs from other levels of government, that there's, there will be a chance that we have a deficit at year-end from Canada's 150th celebrations. So we'll be reporting regularly to the board and working with city staff on this. It's our goal to ensure that these costs don't fall to the Ottawa taxpayer when they more appropriately belong at another level of government.
Okay, is that the presentation?
No, one more. Sorry, one more. The, here's our capital budget. It's a little larger than usual. We're usually in the $10 million range. You can see that $7 million is for the renewal of our assets, primarily for us, that's fleet, IT infrastructure, and our facilities. You'll see in our strategic initiatives that the IT roadmap is starting to gain traction. The three primary areas that you'll see is a change in frontline mobility. Those are the tools that we're bringing to the officer in the vehicle to avoid them returning to the station, being able to do on the road the functions that they are required to do in the station right now, so we'll be able to enable them to become more effective. Enterprise-wide content management and evidence-based decision-making are two other of the initiatives you'll see this year that will help us to improve the kind of support that can come from our operations centre and allow tools like our online background application to go live early in the new year. The number you see for the facility strategic plan, that's us starting to initiate a change to our Queen's View location to expand our presence there, and you'll see that work on the South Lodge Road site begins with the South Patrol Facility as well some of our EOD operations. We pay for that work through funds on hand in our Pay-as-you-go reserve fund. A little bit of it is debt-funded because it relates to facilities. The last slide that we have is forecast. The Audit General reminded us that we need to stay with best budgeting practice. We table a three-year forecast accordingly. You'll see the 25 officer program and our efficiency targets continue through the forecast, and the tax rate according to this series of estimates would be between 2.3 and 2.7%. And we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So just high-level technical questions, not into specifics at this point. So I don't know if the system's working. My system's not working here for recording people. So if council, I see councillor Brockington has the, wants to speak, but it's not coming up on the screen, Matt. Councillor Brockington, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for the presentation. I just note in your, the additional public meetings that are going to be held later this month, November 28th is the public delegations, but also the finance and audit committee meets before that on November 17th. Where would you like us to direct members of the public to? I certainly know they have the opportunity for the public delegations, but is there an opportunity for the public to attend the committee meeting and ask questions as well, or is that more geared towards members of council?
Thank you, thank you, councillor Brockington. That's a great question. We prefer to come to the finance and audit committee. It's open to the public and to the council and to the media, as I said the last time, and that's when I believe you can ask our staff line-by-line budget. We'll follow the mayor's direction. Would like all the question about line-by-line in the budget to be held on committees versus coming to the, but also the public and councillor welcome to come in on November 28 at the board meeting and do your presentation as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councillor Elshen Thiery.
Have a mic here. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our staff, and I would like to thank my colleague and board member, Tim Turney and Jan Harder and the civilian member for working together on this budget. So I want to thank all my colleagues on the police board and our staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So received and tabled, next is the Ottawa Public Library, Le Bibliothèque Publique d'Ataua, 2017 budget.
Budget 2017.
The Ottawa Public Library and CEO Danielle McDonald. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I always enjoy going after the police board presentation because my colleagues will enjoy the fact we're only about six slides. So I think we'll start the presentation. You know, it's still morning. Good morning, Your Worship and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Ottawa Public Library Board's draft 2017 budget. And a quick note on the slides up top, you'll actually see a couple of great events with the Human Library event at Salomar Branch, as well as the second event, which is the awesome authors who participated with the OPL Friends of the Library Writing Contest. So it just really illustrates that libraries are much more than books. Next slide, please. The 2017 draft budget builds on both the 2016 net operating budget and the 2016 capital budget. To this amount, we added 2.97% target allocated by council, therefore thereby providing the library with the 2017 budget envelope of $46.7 million. In addition, OPL will receive $530,000 to support facility lifecycle costs and accessibility improvements managed by our city partners, to bring the total budget envelope to $47 million. Next slide, please. The table that's here details how the OPL will allocate its increase of $1.3 million. The biggest share will go towards cost-of-living adjustments and inflationary costs of staff to run our 33 branches and other services in the amount of $755,000. Second, housekeeping matters, such as maintaining existing software equipment, licensing furniture, security items to the amount of $455,000. And third, our one-time pressures, such as training, customer relations management software, hosting marquee events like the celebration of Canada 150, rounds it out at $390,000. All in, OPL will have a 2017 net operating base budget of $43.4 million. The 2017 capital fund will be spent in three categories. First category is renewal of city assets at $530,000 required to maintain and service our 33 locations. Second is our strategic initiatives, in the amount of $2.1 million will be used to move council and board strategic priorities, including finalizing central library planning, developing business cases on how to best renew Rosemount Branch, Ottawa's only-remaining Carnegie Library, rolling out the two, three-year program update for accessible workstations to the public. And third, growth. Funds for $985,000 will be used to develop the architectural drawings for the branch of the Riverside branch as we all grow the OPL's collection. Next slide, please. Of note, in 2015, 39% of Ottawaans own an active library card. That's a pretty impressive number. I'm very proud of that. And our 33 locations receive 4.8 million visits, while our website had 15.3 million visits. I'm pleased to report on a briefing received by trustees at last night's board meeting pertaining to the economic benefits of the Ottawa Public Library. Based on the report findings, I was very proud to say for every dollar council invests in the OPL, our citizens receive $5.17 in benefit. So in closing, this is a pretty straightforward budget. It meets the city council's target for OPL. It maintains existing staffing complements with no cuts in service while advancing the key strategic initiatives of the board and council. On this final slide, on October 13th, library trustees and staff handed out Customer Appreciation Day bags to celebrate Library Month. This event provided a real opportunity to really get out and thank our supporters. On behalf of the library board, I'd like to thank you again for your continued support of the Ottawa Public Library. And before I close out, I do want to pay a special thanks to our CEO Danielle McDonald as well as all the staff at the OPL. They do a tremendous job, and they should be thanked for that. No see.
Great. Thank you very much. So received and tabled, next is the operating budget for the Ottawa Board of Health, budget provisoire de fonctionnement pour 2017 pour le conseil de santé d'Ataua. Councillor Chad Cadry is the Chair of the Ottawa Public Health Board, along with Dr. Israel Levy will make the presentation. Welcome, councillor Chair Chad Cadry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, everyone. As the Chair of the Board of Ottawa Public Health, I will be presenting our 2017 draft operating budget. Bonjour. Atit de président.
As Chair of the Health Board of Ottawa, I will be presenting the preliminary budget
Slide, please. The Board of Health is presenting a budget of $59.7 million that balances anticipated expenses against anticipated revenues. If approved, the budget will represent a funding provision of $13 million from the city that represents an increase of $375,000 over to 2016. This is the amount council has approved. The budget includes an assumption that we will receive a $765,000 increase from the provincial government on cost-sharing programs and no increase on 100% provincial-funded program. Next slide, please. The budget was developed with a view to compliance with the Ontario Public Health standards, emerging community health issues, and the board's strategic priorities. This slide shows the strategic priorities identified by the Board of Health last year and areas where we've asked OPH to increase their efforts. We've already seen successes. Inspiring and supporting healthy eating and active living, OPH has improved access to healthier food choices in daycares and after-school programs. In terms of an adaptive workforce, OPH has enhanced its capacity to reach and serve diverse communities, particularly in the areas of Indigenous health. In fostering mental health, OPH has increased awareness and reduced the stigma of mental health through its Have That Talk program. And in areas of reducing preventable infectious diseases, OPH has increased immunization coverage of school-age children. These are just a few examples of how Ottawa Public Health is maximizing resources at the same time as it is implementing the board's strategic initiatives. Next slide, please. This proposed budget is built to maintain core services while addressing the costs associated with collective agreements, settlements, and inflation increases. Further, it is designed to allow OPH to address emergency, emerging community health needs such as enhancing mental health promotions, supporting the advancement of Indigenous health, addressing persistent infection control challenges, and overdose prevention. By maximizing innovative use of social media and earned media, OPH has been able to achieve savings in the area of advertising. This budget also identifies savings in external purchases of services. In 2017, the Board of Health will continue to deliver the high quality of programs and services residents have come to rely on. OPH looks forward to its continued role in advancing health promotions, disease prevention, and health protection in 2017 and beyond. Councillors and members of the public are welcome to provide comments on the draft budget, including the next Board of Health meeting on December fifth, where the board will be hearing from public delegations. And at this time, Mr Mayor and colleagues, I'd like to thank the staff at Ottawa Public Health and not, at least, our, Israel Levy, Dr. Israel Levy, our Medical Officer of Health, and for any questions or comment, I will turn the floor over to Mr Levy if he has any comments.
Sort of a technical nature to the Board of Health, oh, thank you very much, merci beaucoup. Received and tabled, technical questions to the City Treasurer or Deputy City Treasurer at this time. So, received and tabled, received and tabled, and refer to the appropriate committees. Committee Report Audit Committee Report Number Nine, Office of the Auditor General Report on Audit Follow-Ups and Detailed Audit Follow-Up Report, bureau de vérification général, received. Fedco Report Number Nineteen, rapport de Fedco numéro dix-neuf, Midterm Governance Review. We have a number of motions, so we'll go to see if we can, see if there are other items that we can pass before we come back to that. Midyear Purchasing Report, received. Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation will come back to that. Report Number Thirty for Surplus Federal Real Property for Homelessness Initiative, Councillor Shirelli is a conflict, so we'll, does anyone have any questions on that? Application to Alter the Bethany Hope Centre, 1140 Wellington Street West, demand de modification visant le centre d'espoir Bethany situé au 1140 rue Wellington. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number, Item Number Thirteen, Interest Fees in Respect of Deferred Municipal Development Charges for Twelve Mion Court. Carried. Report Number Thirty-Five, Item Fourteen, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, Part of Two-Four-Zero-Five Merble Road, modification réglement de zonage parti de deux quarts zéro cinq chemin Merble. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Councillor Elsantieri.
I'm not requesting moving any report, I just want to recognise the work of our staff on the French language services, they managed to reduce complaint in the service quite from ninety-two to thirty-one due to the good work they've done on that department. So I'd just like to recognise our staff for a job well done, félicitations.
Merci beaucoup à notre personne qui travaille dans le bureau.
Thank you to the staff working in the French language services.
Oh, going back to a midterm governance review, 2014-2018, I have three motions. Does anyone else have any other motions for this item?
I have a question.
Okay, well, we'll introduce the motions first. So, first motion is deferral of Planning Advisory Committee Recommendation, Councillor Harder, second by Councillor Leeper. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, it's that simple. I had a conversation this week with Councillor Nusbaum, Councillor Leeper, I met with the members of the Federation of Community Associations, and there's no rush for this, we already meet on literally a hundred different sponsor groups that we do already, and we just want to give a fresh look to this and maybe make something truly unique that might be, you know, in a different direction. So, we're going to wait till the new year to have a look at that.
Does anyone have any questions on this motion? I think it's pretty straightforward. Carried, carried. The next motion is by Councillor Deane, seconded by Councillor Harder, with respect to in advance of significant and or procedural complex reports. Councillor Deane, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this is really technical in nature, but there was an omission in the actual wording of the bylaw that omitted the part where it would not preclude a member from moving a motion at the meeting, so I've worked with legal just to make sure that the wording is corrected, they proposed this wording, I think it's technical.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on this particular item, on the motion? Carried. The third item that we have is from Councillor Chernoshenko, seconded by Councillor Moffett, with respect to Environment Committee Terms of Reference, Biodiversity and Urban Wildlife. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
There we go. Thank you very much. As we're all operating on less than four hours sleep likely, I will not attempt to read all the wheresses and therefor's. This quite simply is an effort to recognise that some issues literally fall through the cracks between the mandates of committees, they're not covered by committees, as well as the fact that urban wildlife quite simply makes no sense being brought to ARAC even though it has a carriage of issues that relate to agricultural rural affairs, rural wildlife. So, with the support of Clerk's Office and as far as I'm aware, the support of all of the chairs that in some way touch on these issues, I'm bringing this motion to add to the mandate of the Environment Committee some quite specific areas that are not covered by other committees.
Does anyone have any questions on this item? Carried on the motion. Councillor Flurry has a question on the report that's before us.
Mr Mayor, thank you, Mr Mayor, I have a question for the clerk relating to consistency of members of council who don't sit on a given board and their ability to speak at those boards. Is there any consistency across committees and if not, what's the reason for that?
I'm not certain with the phraseology, Mr Mayor, consistency. For most of our local boards, often with BIAs and such, we have the word councillor sitting on them, so they act as a liaison and that sort of role, but we could certainly explore this offline if you want to talk more about particular ones.
Yeah, I'll just clarify what I'm saying is, if a member of council who's not a board member of OCH, Library Board, Police Board, or others attends, are they treated as a director or are they members of the community? Anyways, we can take that offline, but that's the gist of my question.
Other questions on this?
Report as amended, carried, carried. The next item that we have is Item Number Ten, Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation, vaut de trois zéro sept un promenade Riverside.
Three oh seven Riverside Drive, three oh seven one.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning again. Last week, Fedco received a report from the Corporate Real Estate Office that detailed their efforts to date by the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation to market and sell the property at thirty seventy-one Riverside Drive, which is commonly known as the former site of Bayview Public School. There was much discussion at committee about the original concept plan formulated as a result of committee consultation and ultimately approved by city council in 2009. The ten acres of land mapped out parcels for development containing low-density residential, medium-density residential, and green space for recreational needs and a fieldhouse. In 2014, city council transferred the authority of this parcel of land to the OCLDC to market, sell, and develop. As stated by Mr McNair last week at committee, the OCLDC had flexibility with its authority to release the RFO this past summer and receive bids from prospective groups, and according to him, the preferred prospective developer's concept plan, as presented in the report, most closely aligned to the original concept plan. It isn't exact, he stated no bids were, and because there were changes from the original concept plan, the 2014 motion indicated that Fedco and city council had to be notified of these changes. Fedco heard from four delegations. Their common message was that the changes were not minor, as described by staff, the confidential nature of the OCLDC process, which precluded them, myself, any member of council or city staff from publicly disclosing the changes more than a week in advance did not provide ample opportunity for the community to be informed, read, understand, and provide comments prior to the Fedco meeting, and that, in particular, but not exclusively, the addition of a mixed-use commercial parcel fronting Riverside Drive was not supported. Many considerations were vetted in 2009, and this did not make the short list. I understand and acknowledge that receiving this report today does not bind the corporation from future decisions that will be necessary at Planning Committee and Council for zoning applications, a subdivision plan, and/or site plan application. That said, there is a heightened level of both the satisfaction and unease that by including this particular parcel in the developer's concept plan, that council may implicitly be agreeing to this as a possibility. While it is true that anything is possible, adding components, even if staff say it's, quote, "just a concept plan," is understandably unsettling. At Fedco, I attempted to defer this item to February, and not one member of the committee would consider to move this even for debate, and I've considered other options, and in speaking with various members of council, there again appears to be little to no interest in amending the plan at this time, and that is unfortunate. In 2015, I sent a community bulletin to 3,000 households in the Riverside Park North area, and from that developed a mailing list that I subsequently circulated four information updates to the community in 2016. I have met and stay in contact with half a dozen local community organizations, whether they be religious, education, homeowners groups, including the community association, and I acknowledge that the pending months will see additional rounds of public consultation on a number of matters, and I'll be developing a small advisory team of community members to work closely with me as the community and I tackle the various applications that will be expected. My frequent meetings and communications with the Riverside Park Community and Recreation Association will remain as they always have been. Finally, when the preferred developer is known, I will meet with them right away to discuss their vision, articulate the known concerns of the community, and discuss plans to host an information session well before any formal applications are submitted. Interest in the project is strong, and I believe that a healthy working relationship between all parties will be needed to address the many issues that lay before us. Thank you, your worship.
Great. Councillor Harder, did you become a chair of Planning Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I can say that since Fedco, Councillor Brockington and I have probably met six times to talk about the way forward, and so that he would have the ability to do his job as he sees it, and, which is the fact, but also how that would roll out. And so, without going into details about the Ottawa Community Land Development Corporation, and many people around this table were not even part of a council that decided on that corporation and why we did, but they were for very good reasons, and I stand by that decision. In this case, however, Councillor Brockington was really concerned, you know, because he heard from some of the public about the concept not being exactly as, but I can tell you that none of the contributors to the RFP met the concept plan. And yet, to have a meeting to discuss the plan when we don't have a plan within, that has been, an application that has been made to the city of Ottawa, what are you going to be discussing? So, we have decided that after looking and talking to planning staff and understanding, and Ms Snedden has been involved, and she's very supportive, and Mr McNair, on how, in the best interest of the people that Councillor Brockington serves, and we all serve, that public consultation and meetings would be held in the community once we have an application before us to consider complete planning applications for any commercial uses on the site, and in fact, in the concept as it is, players have changed too, from all those years ago when works first started in the community. It's likely we may have an official plan amendment, to the secondary plan might be tabled, rezoning and site plot, site plan control at the very minimum, but it's only once we have comprehensive studies and public consultations, which Councillor Brockington will lead, and I have made a commitment to help him with that in any way that I can, that it can be determined whether or not commercial uses in this location are feasible and appropriate. And what we decide today does not tie our hands and ensure that indeed, at the end of the day, once that application comes in, is complete and acted on, that there will be commercial or other parts of the concept as well, because it is in fact truly a concept. I want to thank Councillor Brockington for his leadership on this. I think some people that don't work as hard as he does in his ward and doesn't have the connection with his folks, which are not people around this table, but I'm just talking about, if you didn't have that relationship, people that know him and know the work that he's done should have every assurance that what I've said today and what he said today will definitely come to pass. Thank you.
Great, other comments? Just want to echo Councillor Harder's comments to thank Councillor Brockington, because I know I've seen that the documents and the flyers that you send around to keep people informed, and the issue that you're dealing with is never an easy one, because people get used to, for a long period of time, that empty green space, and they want it really not touched, but I think you've done a very good job of trying to bring the different parties together, and I think, as Councillor Harder rightly said, the opportunity really for greater public input in terms of the actual plan as opposed to the concept will be through site plan, through the Planning Committee, and I know that you will take the leadership role in bringing the community and the proponent together, and I thank Councillor Harder for her offer of assistance as well, so congratulations. So, on the report, received, dissent by Councillor Brockington. Next is disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authorities, suite à donner des articles effectés par les comités en vertu de pouvoir délégués, received. Motion to Adopt Reports, motion important adoption de rapport, Councillor Cloutier, seconded by Councillor Monat, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. That the Audit Committee Report Nine, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Nineteen, Planning Committee Reports Thirty-Four and Thirty-Five be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. Motions of which notices have been previously given. We have a revised motion from Councillor Cloutier, seconded by Councillor Flurry. There are a couple of revisions, Councillor Cloutier, if you'd like to explain, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Council meeting, we gave a notice of motion. There's been some discussions with my colleagues since then. Of course, the notice was to ensure that visitors to Ottawa in 2017 had a choice of locations where they might, hotels are already being well booked, so choice and an extra strategy for visitors to stay in Ottawa. Further to discussions with my colleagues, since that notice of motion, I would like to propose an amendment to my motion, which I believe will be on the screen, very simply, item number, adding number eleven to the motion, looks pretty dense there, adding number eleven to the motion, the Goldburn Recreation Complex at 1500 Shea Road, that's with the concurrence, of course, of the Ward Councillor, Councillor Cadri, and also further to discussions with the general manager of Parks and Recreation, keeping in mind the marketing of the sites, the prices, and the ability of Parks and Rec to contain costs for this initiative. I'd like to propose that on document one, line, the lines are not numbered, but the first line be the column for 2017 rate, instead of reading $110 per night, it read $65 per night. On line number two, tent site, instead of reading $100 per night, it would read $60 per night. And on line number eight, the line that's in bold, Audit And on line number eight, the line that's in bold, Ottawa 2017 Urban Camping Early Bird Packages, instead of reading $75 per night, it would read $50 per night. That is my introduction to the motion, Mr Mayor.
Okay, and I think Guy Leflambeau was with us from 2017. I think this is a very, oh, where is he? There he is, hello, Salut Guy. So this is, I think, makes more sense, a lower price for the tent campers as opposed to the RV people, and adding the Goulburn Rec Complex. Councillor Neusbaum on the motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillors Cloutier and Fleury for putting this forward. I think the idea of coming up with innovative and original ways of welcoming our guests for that important weekend in 2017 is very important and useful. That said, just a question to staff arising from this. I've had a number of residents who neighbour the site in my ward inquire with me, I'm just concerned to some extent about proximity. There are some houses that literally back on right on to individual parking spots, and I just want to confirm with staff that there will be an opportunity to do specific site visits to identify perhaps individual spots within the parking lots that would or would not be appropriate for individual camping spots. Is that something that I can just hear from staff on? Thank you.
Yes, Mr Mayor. Staff would be happy to work with individual councillors and their ward offices to go through the sites and identify the spots that we have selected for both the RV and the tent camping, and to make any adjustments. The addition of the GRC this morning gives us some flexibility with a large parking lot to reduce spots if there are situations that require that. Thank you.
Councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The residents of the beautiful Kitchessippi Ward are excited to welcome these campers at Tom Brown. There have been some concerns expressed that there might not be enough money in the budget on a cost-recovery basis to ensure that we can mitigate any damage to the grass surface at Tom Brown if that gets damaged. At the earliest available opportunity, could we get a breakdown of these costs? How have you done the math to ensure that it is cost recovery, and how do we ensure that it has the cushion necessary to deal with any mitigation that might be necessary?
Yes, Mr Mayor, we'd be happy to circulate to members of council the math behind all this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leeper. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make a brief comment in support of this idea. I know we've taken some criticism over the pricing and alcohol and others, other aspects of this, but it really does stem from an innovative way of ensuring that guests and visitors to this city of all types and all means have access to, to be able to stay here. And I have the personal experience, most summers of taking part in Velo Quebec's Petite Aventure, which frequently stays in towns where the whole rolling 1500 group of cyclists and their families frequently pitch tents on soccer fields. The money that's raised goes towards that, the town that hosts, and the adjacent recreation centre or Sejep or high school serves as the washrooms, the water, the cafeteria, et cetera. So we're not proposing something quite that ambitious, but just to show it, it works elsewhere, and I see no reason why Ottawa can't make it work. Thank you.
Okay, so we have an addition of the Goulburn Rec Centre with councillor Cadri's concurrence, and the price reductions for tent site three-night package to $65, tent site five-night package to $60, and early bird five-night package to $50. Carried? Adoptez? Merci beaucoup. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion by councillor Chernoshenko, seconded by myself, with respect to the AIDS Committee of Ottawa. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is very straightforward. Around City Hall and the courthouse, we have a number of memorials of different kinds. The AIDS Committee of Ottawa was seeking an appropriate site for a memorial in the long and unfortunate history of AIDS here in Ottawa, and we have identified a site working with staff, and simply seeking, if I can go to the therefor's, therefore be resolved that the AIDS Committee of Ottawa be granted permission to install a memorial at the site identified by staff in Marion Duer Plaza, and that the Recreation, Culture and Facility Service Department continue to provide ongoing day-to-day maintenance of the commemoration area as part of its existing maintenance programme for Ottawa City Hall. Be it further resolved that the general manager of the Recreation, Culture and Facility Services Department be delegated the authority to negotiate and execute an agreement with ACO detailing the responsibilities, terms and conditions required to implement this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the motion? Carried? Adoptez? Merci. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? We have one motion here from councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Leeper, with respect to the Parkdale and Byward Market, and there's a time sensitivity, so on, suspension of the rules? Carried. Councillor Fleury, conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Creation of an advisory group on the governance for the Byward Market and Parkdale Market revitalisation. The motion is in front of us. Basically, it's establish five members who will advise the city on the best skill set, numbers for the future municipal services corporation board. So these five individuals are highlighted in the furthered results. So let me read the following. Therefore be resolved that advisory group be created to work with city staff and the core team of stakeholders with a mandate to advise the city on best practices with regards to governance for municipal services corporation, as well as composition, roles, responsibilities and terms for board of directors for municipal services corporation, to be considered by city staff and their report to committee and council Q1 of 2017. So these individuals are as follow: Pierre de Blois, Charles Peter Daniel, Gilles Paquette, Eva Mickchick and Louise Panetton. So these are experts in governance.
Councillor Elsantieri.
Mr Mayor, question to our staff first. We use in the same motion best practice, and then we have five individual, we don't know how they get to be selected. And what does that mean? Just for the Byward Market? And what does it mean to our staff? Like, is the staff aware of this? Like, this is coming on the fly to this, to the council? I don't understand why it doesn't go to committee before it comes to council.
Mr Mayor's staff is aware of it. We've been, since council approved the go-forward plan for the Byward, Parkdale markets in May of this year, we've been working with a core group of stakeholders, working with councillors Fleury and councillor Leeper on, you know, bringing the report to Fedco in February of next year, that deals with all the recommendations that were in front of committee in May. So where this, we're looking for some expertise in terms of the governance for the municipal service corporation. It's a, it's going to be a, you know, a large, complex corporation, so we're looking for outside advice from people that are expert in the field of governance. And from a staff perspective, we support this motion from a committee.
So just to be clear, just for those two places?
Yes, it's just the two, Byward and Parkdale.
And, Mr Mayor, maybe in the future, something like this will come to the committee, like to Fedco, and so we'll have, if the public have to say something, or somebody who would like to be on this committee and didn't get the chance, so we don't hear from them after we approve this? Just as an advice, next, policy should be on committee, not on council, and that's based on your advice, Mr Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just have a question. I don't see anything about financial implications here. Are these going to be given honorariums? What's the cost to taxpayers to put this committee together?
They're all volunteer.
They'll all be volunteers, so no cost to the taxpayer? Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Great, thank you. Thanks, councillor Hubley. Councillor Harder, please.
Just trying to see the top of it, to see where it says, okay, that's fine, thank you, Mr Mayor. It says specifically the revitalisation of Byward, that's not what we see here, so I checked it, thank you.
So on the motion, it's presented? Carried? Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. I've it motion for examen réunion subsicante. We have two. Councillor Neusbaum, seconded by councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is simply an extension for an application for lane closure. I'll just read the final clause. Therefore be it resolved that city council approves a final extension of the expiry date for application for lane closing from December 31, 2016 to December 31, 2017, to allow for sufficient time for the applicant to satisfy all of the conditions and complete the process to purchase the lane. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, notice of motion is from councillor Moffat, seconded by councillor De Ruz, please. Councillor Moffat.
Thank you. Yes, like America, I just made a mistake at the, at the last meeting of council, so I, it's just, this will just, this will just correct something. On our review for coach houses, I was supposed to include something about lot sizes, so this just comes back, it'll come back to next meeting, just to make sure that we're including the lot size portion in the real area in our further review. Thanks.
Great, thank you. That's to make Manitick great again, right? Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Motion to introduce bylaws. Motion pour ta présentation de règlement, conseil Cloutier, appuyé par conseil Monnette, s'il vous plaît.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, the three readings, be read and passed.
Carried? Yeah. Confirmation bylaw, please. Councillor Cloutier, seconded by councillor Monnette.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of November 9, 2016.
Carried. Councillor Elsantieri.
Mr Mayor, and my colleague, I just want to take this moment to say thank you to councillor Harder for her service on the police board in the past six years, and due to her workload, she has stepped down in this mid-government report, and I want to also take the opportunity to welcome councillor Hubley to the board. So councillor Harder, a heartfelt thank you for your service on police board. Thank you.
There are no written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk? Do you have a written inquiry? Okay, I haven't seen it.
Sorry about that. Ottawa is currently preparing to host upwards of 1.75 million more visitors for Canada's 150th anniversary, and at present, these celebrations will include over 500 special events. Knowing this, could the Ottawa 2017 Group provide a comprehensive list of the anticipated city resources that will be required to support the events and visitors anticipated for next year? This list should be broken down by department and include the financial cost to provide these resources, as well as a funding source. In addition, could staff please outline what measures will be taken to ensure the safety of our residents and visitors, which is, of course, of paramount importance? And finally, could staff please provide a response to this inquiry prior to the December 6 meeting of the Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Adjournment. Councillor Cloutier, please.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of November 9, 2016 be adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. For members of the media, the city manager, treasurer and myself will be available right away because of a time issue, so if members of the media are interested, in the foyer of my office, I'll be available. Thank you.